This time call the regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, October 12th, 2009 to order. The clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Byrne?
Here.
Councilmember Dorn?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Muller?
Here. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, the regular meeting is September 28th, 2009, motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Dorn, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Byrne, second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stevens. Clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Presentations, presentation number one.
LeAnn Allen of the Cooperative Extension Service and Mark Thiel of Blue November will give a presentation regarding the success of the community gardens.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm here on behalf of St. Clair County and a true partnership that we had with the community garden on Eighth and Griswold this year. The garden started as, oh, here we go, starting on day one, working it up. It was truly a partnership between the Seventy-Second District Court and Judge Monahan, who really saw a need for community gardens and approached our office, MSU Extension, with our knowledge and research-based education on farming. So with myself and Dan Zimmer from the Seventy-Second District Court, we put together a proposal and we were able to have the land donated to us by Atchison, which we maintained. It was a great garden. And feel free to just put these pictures through as I speak, I'm not talking directly on any of them, but just on the true partnership of the garden. Once we worked it up, we were able to have St. Clair County Community College and their horticulture students with their greenhouse start all of the plants for us. And any of you who are gardeners know that that's truly the largest expense in gardening. So it was a true blessing for us to have the students there and Pat Griffin, their instructor, start all of those plants. Like I said, myself, master gardeners, and Dan Zimmer from the court, we were able to do a garden layout and have a great garden, which at the end, all of our harvest went to Mid-City Nutrition, right here in Port Huron. And I believe she was quoted as saying, between our garden and other gardens, she had 2,200 pounds of fresh locally grown produce come in, come into Mid-City Nutrition. So just really here on behalf of the whole group that was able to take part in this garden and right here in Port Huron. So think of us, think of all of the partners. If you have anyone that comes to you talking about community gardens or wish to utilize the land that is sitting barren, there are truly economic, social, and environmental benefits to having community gardens on that land. So thank you for letting me come in and talk about that tonight.
Well, thank you.
It was a great honor, and I'm going to pass it over to Mark, who did a similar garden. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I don't have nearly as elaborate a presentation. However, I would like to extend my thanks to the city of Port Huron and to the Port Yearan Housing Commission for making lots available to us to choose from. We ended up picking a spot over on Armour Street and Hancock. That turned out to be, well, next year, I'm going to go get LeAnn's tractor. I'm going to do something. That's our getting things started there, trying to dig up this lot. I also want to thank the Michigan chapter, the St. Clair County chapter, the Michigan Master Gardeners. They provided us a $300 grant to get things going, to get plants and use as we sow, whatever we needed to get the thing up. Mr. Greg Jones of Feed and Seed on Pier Avenue also donated a great number of plants and seeds to us, and I want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. He has a very good community participation and willingness to help out from maybe places that people might not be aware of. Then individual thanks goes from my perspective to Mary Rockledge. She really did help me a great deal in making contacts with different people. Dan Zimmer from the work program coordinator for the Seventy-Second District Court, he helped to get some people out to help us that original, they spread dirt and dig and clean and do whatever. They also helped plant. Other individuals who helped us out was Carol Keeney, Carolyn Holly, Susan Alderman, Mac Woote, their daughters Claire and Haley, and Ruth Hobeluski. Our harvest wasn't quite as large as one might hope for. We did make a small contribution to the St. Martin's Food Kitchen or Soup Kitchen. And there were some local neighbors who were able to make use of the garden as well. There's word that a couple of people in the neighborhood had fallen on hard times, had lost jobs, and were using the garden to supplement their food stuff. So from my perspective, that was a great way for that garden to be used. And I would hope to be able to continue it next year and make it look a little better to those there and see what we can do from here on out. Oh, that's not ours, that's, I'm sorry. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. LeAnn and Mark, thank you, and everyone else that was involved for your work, and we appreciate it. Public audience, we are now public audience. At this time, anyone wishing to address the city council on any issue that's on the agenda or that you feel pertinent to bring before the city council, this is the time to do so. We ask that you give your full names, spell your last name for the clerk, and hold your comments to four minutes. Public audience is now open.
Excuse me, Brian, but we're not at the court.
Pardon me?
Court, we're not at the court.
Oh, sorry.
Julian Rumford, R.U.A.N. authority. Do you want the address too? Because sometimes people say your address and they don't.
I don't care about the address.
Um, Port Huron. I have a, wrote a little thing here. April 4th, 2009, I attended SC4 College Day. Hello, city council, Mayor Muller, and Bruce Brown, and City Clerk Childs. April 4th, 2009, I attended SC4 College Day. This year, I took one one-hour class presented by Dennis Delore. The topic was Fort Brashet, the sentinel of the lake, sentinel find, one that watches or guards sentry, a soldier standing guard at a point of passage as a gate. As in all wars, we cannot predict the outcome, but we are in a different type of war right now, a war in economics. Sometimes our best judgments can be clouded by our personal beliefs. It doesn't mean we can't go forward in making laws based on our historical past, but past and present sometimes collide, making our hopes and dreams of the future that much difficult to perceive. Do we need prisoners in our close proximity to Stanish, Michigan? Like the automobile industry, we have shipped our workers' work overseas. Why can't we do so with international crimes? Surely, we did not build our new prison in Port Yearan Township to house them. And a couple of people spoke this year in public audience here at Port Yearan City Council. They said they don't have any kids. What does that have anything to do with anything? I did not personally have children myself. I had three stepkids. I also had a council, a brother-in-law in the city council in Oakland County. On November 1st, I received a letter, Own Your Own Future, by our governor, Jennifer Graham-Holm. And in this letter, and I don't know how many people got it, I don't have, know if there's any statistics done on who gets the letter, the people that are other than the age here, between 45 and 65, start planning now for their future long-term care needs. I don't know if there's a list of people in Michigan that got it that are single or with no children, or is there any discriminatory towards that? As it says, many of us do not like to think about getting older. And it goes on to say, the truth is, most of us will need some type of long-term care in our later years. Well, with our healthcare system, the way it is right now, this is kind of like wasn't foreseen, the future of the situation now with our healthcare. It was kind of like saying, well, you better have long-term care or else. I didn't really appreciate the letter, and in the Times Herald, someone wrote a letter, Governor Not A Mouthpiece For Federal Government, by Janet Cargill, Applegate. And I'll end it here. Life support for the terminally ill nowadays are not similar than 20 years ago. And pro-choice where there is really no choice is not similar as it was in Roe versus Wade in 1973. In order to go forward or in science, technology, and social justice, we need to step back once in a while and see the whole picture, as did Wall Street and Main Street. Thank you, city council.
Thank you, and have a nice night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm Anthony America, an official write-in candidate for city council, and I'd like your votes, all your votes, and out there in TV line. So write in my name and connect the lines after my name in the ballot. Manager Brown, you did a good recommendation. I'm buying that land. Don't care what anyone else says, you did right. That land should be the city's. On this great and auspicious day of celebration, honoring a great man of destiny and history who put an end to the indigenous practice of cannibalism and began the journey that has led us to this point in history, we celebrate the time and life of Christopher Columbus. The American indigenous genocide happened so we could save their immortal soul for Christ and better management of their land and their gold. The acquiring of Fico Point was a wise decision, and let's not give it to Atchison Ventures to sit vacant like all the other land we gave them. Again, I ask, and I've asked this several times, what was the $10 million we spent a few years back? Was it not to stop the odor? Where did the money go? Someone did not do his job, like many other times. What was going on with near a year fixing the parking lot outside of the entrance here? It had to be cured, baloney cured. Mayor Muller was right to question the city engineer and expect answers. We can sell that pile of rust on that land you just bought, and we could make a profit, I believe, if we sell it to the iron scrappers. Think about it, that's a lot of iron there that could give us back the selling price. I believe what we have here is not a fair year to communicate, but a prime example how St. Clair County deals with wrongdoing and corruption. Like the jail debacle, tell the people the FBI is investigating, and then they just sit on their buns, hoping the people and their questions go away. The FBI is investigating? Bull feathers. City council, I ask you to find out, where did the $10 million go? That amount could have given us a water bottling plan. We could have sold us bottled water, not the stink that pervades our downtown and the beautiful waterfront. $10 million, my entile span. We got suckered and cheated again. The reason I'm dressed so fancy is because of all of you people, I want your votes. So remember, write in my name and connect the lines. Fireworks, Christmas decorations, Atchison Ventures, vacant land, I've fulfilled promises. Put sugar on anything and wave a flag, and people won't believe anything. (singing)
Anyone else wishing to speak, a public audience, now's the time to do so.
Good evening, I'm Karen Polka, part of the Blue Water Film Festival, 504 Grand River, Jeremy Steeman. We'd like to thank the city council for support and the mayor for support of the Blue Water Film Festival. This past Saturday was a very successful event at McMorn, and we're very proud of it. We also have given to Ms. Childs, who passed out the program as well as the Times Herald article from yesterday. We look forward to future years and even greater success, and our future goals already began today for the Blue Water Film Festival.
Well, thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, and we hope to have more years of it. It was, I understand, was really excellent. Thank you. Public audience, anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
My name is Darlene Peterson, I live at 3017 Riverside Drive in the Colonial Woods Hood. It's in Port Huron. I want to thank all of the council members here, past, present, and future for serving us, the citizens of Port Huron. It's a thankless job, I understand that. My comments are not meant to condemn anything that you guys have done, and you women, I'm sorry, didn't mean to do that. You have kids, let's keep it at that. My question is, on the recent land purchase, I understand that that is a done deal. Am I correct on that? We have purchased it.
That's correct.
It's not backing out, okay. My concern is, at this point, when it goes on the ballot, what happens? What does our plan B if the voters say, no, we don't want to sell it? And it's a very real possibility that they could say, just out of spite, for instance, do we have a plan B? Maybe we can get back on that.
If the, we can't do anything with it unless the people decide to do something.
I understand that, I understand that. And I truly believe that there are greater minds than mine that, on this speculative deal. And I, as a businessperson, I don't know that I would have taken that speculative deal, but I think that it was a great leap of faith on everyone's part. I'm sure that it went through the city and the engineering department, and I have the highest regard for the people that work in the city, I really do. And I want to hope that this is going to be something good, something that will be great for our community, for our whole city, for our county. So I would just like to know, in the future, perhaps in like the next couple of weeks, maybe we could have a thought pattern on what is our plan B? If it doesn't, if people say, the 30,000 people that live in the city say, no, we aren't going to let you sell it. Thanks.
Margaret, I'm right, Port Huron, and I too have a comment on the property. And I do feel that Bruce Brown did very well on that. And I read an article in yesterday's paper, and I want to quote, I hope, right, where Sean Groden said that the county had no intention of ever purchasing that property and that the council lied to the citizens. Well, maybe Sean Groden personally didn't intend to buy the property. I don't know, so he has that kind of money. I know I don't, but I do know that he had somebody behind him that probably would have backed it, and I wish that that could be reprinted in the paper and not make it look like this council lied to the citizens of Port Huron, because I truly believe they didn't. I think this council knows more about what they're doing than any that we've had in quite some time, and I stand behind them, and I hope the majority of the people in this township, the city, St. Clair County, the whole works, I hope they all stand behind it. As far as the smell goes, I have sat over at Vantage Point many, many times, all summer long, and I have never once had that problem. Maybe there's something wrong with me. I know there's a lot wrong, but something besides that. So I just wanted to give you my comments. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Angela Kelly, I'm at 3531 Shenandoah. I moved, but I'm still in the city of Port Huron. I just wanted, in regards to, there's on the agenda for special approval for a use permit for a family childcare home, and what got me involved into City Matters is the fact that I wanted to own, this is back in 99, my own family home daycare center. Because of the situation and everything that happened with that, I was turned down, but that's because there were some landlords in the neighborhood that said I was going to put 500 kids into my 2,500-square-foot house, and I wasn't. I might be able to fit 500 kids in there, I don't know. But out of that, it seems that we have a lot of small businesses, especially with the way that technology is. And I just want to encourage this council and city administration to definitely keep an open mind to that, just from what I have personally been through. I think that we need to encourage small business ownership in the city of Port Huron. I'm not sure of all the circumstances with this, I don't know if the neighbors are going to put up a fuss, but you know, as long as they're licensed to the state, I think that we should definitely encourage to have more businesses here with small businesses. They've got to do their cleaning supplies, they've got a home improvement, because the kids are going to tear up the house, they've got a grocery shop, they're going to do all those things locally, so it benefits the whole community. And I think that we've had some issues in the past because of massage parlors and things like that, not parlors, but in home. And I know that some of those things are touchy, but I just wanted to encourage you to be open to those types of businesses. We have tax preparations, a lot of small family businesses too, in the homes, and I just like to encourage, because zoning in Port Huron, and we tend to have that, it's hard to do business in Port Huron, and I'd like to see that go away. And Mr. Brown, I called him up, and he took my call. How's that for a city manager? And I said, hey, I'm having problems with parking downtown at my job, and the next thing I know, it was done in a minute, just thank you so much. There was a new sign out there and new permits given to us, and it was a tricky situation, but I know with Mr. Brown's urban planning background, it really showed that he can make a difference and a quick resolution at that. So I just wanted to thank you personally, Mr. Brown, that I can park every day and go to my job. And definitely keep an open mind for the changes in the zoning. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Laurie Sample-Win, I live at 3443 Stone Street, and I'm here representing a couple of members of the charter commission, Pauline's here tonight too. My main objective, I'm here to ask everyone to please come tomorrow night. We are having a public hearing at 6:30 here in this meeting room, and we really, really want everyone to come down and put, tell us what you want in your, in the new charter. We're still looking at the chapters to deal with, while we haven't made any final decisions, we've just made some tentative decisions on what we think the charter should look like. But we really want your input, and we're asking you to come down. If you want to see a ward system or any combination thereof, or you don't want a ward system, we want to know. If you want to see your council members elected every four years or every two years on staggered terms, we want to know. So we're asking you to please come down and give us your public opinion tomorrow night here at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, public audience?
Guess I need these. Good evening, council, Mr. Brown, Mayor Muller. This past Saturday, the Citizens for a Vibrant Community hosted Happy Apple Days for the first time. Happy Apple Days had been a downtown event for 10 years and was eliminated due to a change of focus. Our group decided it needed to be brought back, and we did. We have a lot of people to thank for helping. The Black River Powell Group were lifesavers. They came through with the volunteers to help us pull this off. Their experience with their own event was priceless, and they were so much fun to work with, on top of it all. My hope is, we can continue to work with them on any other projects that we do. Randy Fernandez and his staff at McMorn were lifesavers as well. Due to issues beyond our control, we had to change the location from the 200 and 300 block of Huron to McMorn at a moment's notice, and Randy and his staff really helped us. They bent over backwards to make sure we had everything we needed, including electricity supplied from the building. If they had not been so helpful, we may not have been able to pull this off. Dave Childs was there for us the entire day, looking after all our last-minute issues. We also want to thank John Ogden and Robin Berry at the city for helping us make sure we had everything done in accordance with city ordinances. They were great at communicating what we needed to do, so we got it right. We especially want to thank our fine council member, Alan Lewandowski, and radio personality, Paul Miller from WPHM, for being such good sports and letting us plaster them with pies. I sent some photos over to Sue earlier in the day for everybody to get a look at how beautiful Alan looked at the end. The money earned from the pie throwing is going towards the purchase of the historical marker our group hopes to purchase soon, so thank you, Alan. We really appreciate you coming, you were just gorgeous when you were done. My group worked so hard to pull this off and deserve a lot of appreciation. Jason Sawyer handled all the vendors and made sure they got what they needed. Russ Kelly took care of all the financial issues and managed to get lots of prizes from the local merchants and restaurants downtown. Even during these challenging economic times, our local downtown business owners were generous with their donations to make our event successful. Mike McCully was the driving force behind this event. It had been his dream to bring it back after it was canceled, and he did it. Angie Kelly made sure we had our act together and kept us on track all the way through, and Pam Sawyer, coming in brand-new to our group, brought years of experience putting on events like this to help us pull it all together. I am very grateful and blessed to be working with such a talented and dedicated group of people. Happy Apple Days will be back next year on the second weekend of October. Keep watching, because Citizens for a Vibrant Community have more things coming. Our work is not done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your work.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Muller, and Mr. Brown. My name's Mike McCully. The weather is finally changing, and it's time to put freighter fries away for this year. I wanted to let all you know that it was a good year, and we had a lot of favorable comments about the concession wagon. I'd really like to thank Mayor Muller and the city council for changing the ordinance and allowing a vendor to go on the Thomas Citizen Parkway for all this, for all the support throughout the year. Lots of people wanted it to happen, and it was nice that the council listened to the people and allowed it to happen. I want to thank, thanks city manager Bruce Brown for working closely with me and helping me smooth out for startup issues. John Livisay, who was the city attorney at the time, worked really hard to make sure everything was in order to help us prepare for the, with the contract. City clerk Sue Childs and her staff, Karen and Janelle, were really helpful and very patient. There was so mu, they helped me out so much, I can't even begin to tell you in what all little ways that they took care of all the things for me. Chief Fike, thank you for helping me pull this through, pull it through the tight situations. It wasn't easy putting a concession wagon on the parkway, and Chief Fike worked to make sure it was safe and secure. We also want to thank the Blue Water area residents and the fishermen for supporting us in a very successful year. See you next spring.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager, Ken Harris, 1521 Wells Street, Port Huron. I just want to reiterate what has been said just a few minutes ago. Tomorrow night could be a historic event for Port Huron. It will be historic if we get 14 candidates there to express their views on the city charter and the future of the city of Port Huron. It will be not historic if none of these people show up. The event is important. Some of the changes are significant, some of the changes in the charter are insignificant. But no matter where you feel on the issues, you should be there and put your two cents in, because you won't have anything to say about. This will probably be the final public hearing before we get to vote on this, after the Attorney General reviews the document. And like I say, I think it's so important that I, it's, I'm challenging every candidate to be there tomorrow night. I think it would behoove you and behoove the city of Port Huron. And I just like to reflect back for a minute here, you know, we just had a report here, I think it was the last city council meeting, we talked about the purchase of a snowplow for the city of Port Huron for $109,000. You know, I look at that, and I just looked a year ago. You know, I look at that, and I just looked, a year ago, the county of Saint Clair bought a demo cabin chassis and a snowplow, and they paid a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. I just wanted to commend the accomplishment of the purchasing department or the city engineers for the savings. We have a brand-new vehicle and with a snowplow, and we saved five thousand dollars in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Hearing non-seen none, public audience is closed. Consent agenda, motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lewandowski, second. Support by Councilmember McCullough. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. With the passage of the consent docket, Resolution Number Two is passed, scheduling a public hearing for October twenty-six, two thousand nine, to hear comments at the, on the application of IAC Port Huron LLC for the transfer of industrial facilities exemption certificates, number two thousand three dash two-one-five, two thousand five dash zero-six-eight, and two thousand six dash two-six-three, and on the extension of certificate number two thousand three dash two-fifteen. Resolution Number Four, scheduling a public hearing for October twenty-six, two thousand nine, to hear comments on code case zero-nine dash zero-zero-three, six thirteen, six fifteen, six seventeen, six nineteen, Glenwood Avenue, to ascertain and determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by Chapter Ten, Section Ten dash two-eleven, and Charter Thirty-four, Section Thirty-four dash three of the Code of Ordinance. Resolution Number Six, confirming and declaring a single-lot assessments in the total amount of eight hundred and ten dollars for the cost of removing noxious weeds or unlawful growth or blighting factors. Resolution Number Eight, confirming and declaring a single-lot special assessments in the total amount of two thousand sixty-four dollars for sidewalk replacement. Resolution Number Nine, confirming and declaring single-lot special assessments in the total amount of five hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-four cents for special trash pickup in the right-of-way. And Resolution Number Eleven, scheduling a public hearing for October twenty-six, two thousand nine, to hear comments on the application of SMW Automotive for an industrial facilities exemption certificate. Upcoming events, October thirteenth, Charter Commission public hearing at six-thirty PM in the public meeting room at the MLC. October sixteenth through the eighteenth, the Rocky Horror Show at McMorn. October sixteenth, Women in Song and Verse at seven PM at Studio twelve-nineteen. October seventeenth, Tractor Rally at Desmond Landing. October seventeenth, Walk to Support Down Syndrome, Saint Clair County Down Syndrome Support Group. October seventeenth, Ice Hogs versus Fort Wayne at seven PM at McMorn. October twenty-third, Ice Hogs versus Flint at seven PM at McMorn. October twenty-third, the Uppers at seven-thirty PM at McMorn. And October twenty-fourth, Make a Difference Day, volunteers can meet in the MLC South Parking Lot at eight AM. I meant to do this earlier for the public's notice, but no one commented, anyway. Agenda change, item number seven has been deleted from the agenda. Resolution Number One.
Authorizing payments one through seventeen.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fisher, second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Dorn. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing non-seen none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution Number Three.
Is authorizing the zoning administrator to issue a special approval use permit for a family childcare home at sixteen twenty-four Sanborn Street.
Motion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember McCullough?
Move for the adoption of Resolution Number Three.
Second?
Support.
Support by Mayor Pro Tem Fisher. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Mayor Pro Tem Fisher?
Did this come before the planning commission, or did, how was, how'd they go?
Well, nobody showed up to argue against it. I believe it was limited to six children in the house, if I remember correctly, but nobody showed up to argue against it.
Okay, thank you. Go.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing non-seen none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution Number Five.
Is approving the sale of the city-owned lot at the northeast corner of Armour and Elmwood Streets for a total of one thousand dollars.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Stevens, second by Councilmember Byrne. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
Glad to see we're still moving in the direction of getting some of these parcels off the city's hands and moving them back into the private sector. This particular one is a real nice one. Kind of odd how the property was split up, but I guess that was amicable to the two neighbors there, I assume.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I would support Diddlemark on your comments, so. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing non-seen none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution Number Ten.
Is directing the city manager to prepare the necessary ordinance change to institute additional exemptions for those taxpayers who are deaf and/or paraplegic, quadriplegic, hemiplegic, or totally and impermanently disabled persons as defined by federal and state law.
Motion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember McCullough?
Move for the adoption of Resolution Number Ten.
Second?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Dorn. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Dorn, or her Byrne?
I don't know about you, but myself, I don't like all these special tax breaks for businesses to give them tax abeyments, I don't like this group or that group being favored over one group or another, I just like low taxes, period. And the more you give out these special breaks, the more the other people have to pick up the tab. Nothing against this group or any other groups we give tax breaks to, but we got to get it down overall, not just for certain people and raising it on other people.
I would, I would tend to agree with you, however, this council's talked about the income tax for two years, and I finally decided to do some research. And I did some research, and this is one group that by state statute we can give an exemption to. And I've also contacted the state representative about asking him to change the laws so that we can give other exemptions for other people. For instance, one of the things I've suggested to Representative Pavlov is that when the SMW opens their factory, that any business in the city that hires city residents be given a six-hundred-dollar deduction, just as if it was a member of their family for corporate and all businesses. But as you know, the state law only allows us to give exemptions on the city income tax, it's guided by state law. These, what I found amazing about this was that the blind and the elderly were given the exemption in nineteen eighty-six, and nineteen eighty-seven, these groups were at it, and the city never took any action. And I think these people certainly deserve the benefit just as much as elderly and blind people, so with that, I would be supporting this.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
How big of an exemption are we talking about? Is it a total?
Six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's the same deduction that everyone else gives. Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing non-seen none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
No.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution Number Twelve.
Is directing the city clerk to place on the May fourth, two thousand ten, regular election ballot the following question. Shall the City of Port Huron be authorized to sell the property known as the Black River Point property to a qualified developer as determined by the Port Huron City Council?
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Byrne, second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stevens. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
This is one of the about four waterfront properties we have, there's three others that I'd like to see put on the ballot so we can move them as well. There's one over by the Tenth Street Bridge, half-connected to a parking lot there, I'd really like to see something happen with that to get it off our hands. And then there's two along the Saint Clair River there, what's the street, right by the Pine Grove Park there, there's two vacant lots between houses there. Those three lots pretty much are going to waste, they're blight, they're not well-maintained. Be nice to get them turned over into private hands, either the neighbors buying them along the river there, or somebody else buying and building one of those houses that extend out over the river a little bit, there are cottages, whatever those are.
Where's the one on the Saint Clair River?
There's two of them right along, trying to think what the street is there. I want to say Merchant, but I'm not sure that's it. Yeah, the Kellys, no.
That's the Glenwood?
You know how they got the, right by Pine Grove Park and the water plant, and then coming towards downtown, you got that dirt road, and you got the houses along there, and there's a couple of empty lots there? Two of those are city-owned.
Okay. I certainly would support the one on Black River over there. We could have the city manager look at it and put them on the ballot.
Figure, that would be my other question, is this going to be the only thing on this ballot, or will there be other things likely on there, like perhaps the charter or something? I hate to have a ballot just for this. Oh, school election, okay.
The clerks advise me that the school will be having their election, that is the May general election.
Okay, so no additional costs, of course?
Right.
Good. Well, we pay part of it, right?
No, we'll, we'll be paying for the whole election then. The school only pays for the additional cost of putting the ballot language for their items on.
Oh. So if we don't do this, they pay for the whole election, and we do ours at a different time?
Any further questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
I have a question. I was wondering if Bruce thought the May fourth would be a, not doing it May fourth, but waiting for the next election where there's something else, would be hindering to moving the property into private sector, or make no difference, or if you had any thoughts on that?
Do you have any thoughts on? Um, he, I actually was the one that asked him to put it on the ballot as soon as possible so that we could, it's easier to sell the property if we have the permission of the residents prior, you know, we could say, we're going to sell you this development, and then the taxpayers come back and say no, so this way.
Lots of deals are killed by too many conditions. And if I were a developer looking to buy this piece of land, I thought that it had to be scheduled for an election, and it had to pass, et cetera, et cetera. There's too much land around that I could buy without that kind of a problem. And so, that's why.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
Does Sue have an estimate what an election costs for just one item?
Between thirteen and fifteen thousand dollars if we're doing it all on our own.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Dorn?
Do we have any indication that the charter, it would just seem that, would that be ready by then, for that election? I mean, do we have any likelihood of that? Not, not likely at all?
I believe they're shooting for August, to put it on the August ballot.
They're saying, no, not likely.
Councilmember McCullough?
Just, just a quick question, if we approve this thing May fourth, we can always come back and change the date of the election. If a couple months down the road, it looks like the charter might be in August, might be better to push it a few months back. That wouldn't be a problem to change it, would it? To, from May fourth to an August election, if so desired?
Yeah, we can change it. Yeah, we can change it, and also if the city administration has a buyer, we can leave it on May fourth, so that it can be done. But the council can change the date of the moving from one general election to another general election if so desired.
The council meets the deadline, right?
Yeah, as long as you meet the deadline before, remove it before the deadline.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Bruce, what is the plans for this property? What will we be doing with it up until May fourth? What's your next step, I guess, besides marketing it?
Well, I'm not going to do a lot until the property's available for, for sale. And I'm going to, I'm going to test the market and see if there's anybody really obvious right at this point in time. I've had some interest, and I'm going to pursue that interest. But I've bought lots of land, and I will tell you that if you have an election that's setting between you and the closing, that's a lot easier to sell without, so. I don't expect there'll be a heavy interest in the piece of land until it's really available for sale.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Dorn?
And to Darlene's point, who, she, when we were looking back at her, she was probably wondering, they just had given me blank stares, and just would remind everybody that typically protocol doesn't allow us really to interact during the public audience period of time. But, but that's what the city did when it put this up for election, it left it to the voters' hands, and we have to be quite content to accept their verdict on that, whatever it is. If they want it, don't want it sold for development, then it won't be sold for development. And I don't think that, that that's our point, to second-guess that aspect of it. And there was a lot of questions that the public had about how land was used in the past on the waterfront, and so they put this provision in, and so be it. So I'm satisfied that the public will speak to the issue, and if it, and if they don't want to put it into the hands of a developer, then it'll on all likelihood be cleaned up and hopefully mowed and look nice.
Mayor Muller?
Councilor Stevens?
I'd like to speak to that, too. Again, I'd like to reiterate what Marty said, that we can't interact, we're not to interact with people. And to reiterate again what he said, it's up to the voters. I think that's why most of us voted to have this piece of property, is so that the voters could speak. It's my hope that if the voters vote no, they don't want it commercially developed, then we will have some meetings, and we will talk to them about what they would like, and it'll go back on the ballot again to make sure that we do what the voters want. Taxpayers of the City of Port Huron will own the property.
Any further discussion, comments, concerns? Mayor Pro Tem Fisher?
One point, since the property's gone ahead and been purchased, I think it's best that it get on the ballot as soon as possible to answer the question about selling it or developing it. So this would put it at the May fourth election. If we got to pay the thirteen thousand to fifteen thousand, you're looking at about two percent of the cost of the property, so, which is pretty minimal. So, I ran numbers, that comes up to thirteen thousand and a few dollars, so two, two-and-a-quarter percent right in there.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Dorn?
And to Councilman Byrne's point about these other properties that he's suggesting be put on there as well, I think, you know, one of the observations I would like to make is that almost to a person, the residents of Port Huron feel that our future is really tied to the appropriate use of waterfront property. And if you go down, starting up at the Blue Water Bridge and work all the way down past Vantage Point, you really see a remarkable and magnificent change in the waterfront over the last couple of decades here in Port Huron community. And most of that has had the hands of government on it. In fact, I would suggest to you that none of this would have happened if government didn't in some way get involved and help, or in some fashion be the impetus for some of the development and growth that's happened on the waterfront. And I'm a big private sector guy, I like to see things in the hands of, of the private sector, but this and other pieces of property, if, if the city wouldn't have partnered with Atchison Ventures, we'd still have a mess down there at Vantage Point. If the city hadn't partnered up in Edison Shores, we wouldn't have the beautiful development and the waterfront walkway that we all cherish up there, wouldn't have any of that kind of stuff. So just to speak to the issue of whether it's appropriate for government to get involved, I think if you go all the way down the Saint Clair River and all the way down the Black River, it took the hand of government as a partner with the private sector to see that happen. So again, I support adding, I don't know, these particular properties in question, I I don't know of these particular properties in question. I wish we had a picture of them so we could see exactly where they were at. But I certainly would agree that putting those into the hands of either neighbors or people for development is a good thing.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Bruce, one more question. Do we have any plans to do anything with the train bridge and the area around it that has some of the contamination? Are we going to clean that up before we start marketing it, or are we just going to leave it there and let the developer decide what they want to do with it?
We don't have any plans at this point, but it could be open to the public. It's got a fence around it. It could be open to the public. It's kind of an interesting piece of land, and... But, you know, we... This kind of came on this kind of fast, and I don't have any plans at this point in time.
Do you think the piece of property is more marketable with the bridge on it or off it? I mean, I guess that's what my concern is, will we be spending money to tear this bridge down?
I don't want to get into the bridge. The bridge is a... An item that is very important to some people, that we keep it, and very important to some people that we get rid of it. I think we got to take a look at it and see what the options are, and bring those back to you, and let you decide what you want to do with it.
Okay.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
I'm okay with putting it on the soonest one as possible, especially if we get those other ones on there, and the fact that we could move it if there's absolutely nothing else going on and the economy continues to drag and all that kind of stuff. So I'm going to go ahead and support this, simply because the sooner the better in my mind, and the sooner we get things happening there, the better. My question is, currently, there's a locked gate there, and then further down, there's a big hole in the gate. Not in the gate, but in the fencing, so it's not really closed off, but it's not open. Could we make up our mind one way or the other and either open it up or close it off? Preferably open it up, I guess.
The problem with opening it is we have a liability issue at that point in time that maybe we don't have at this... I don't know whether we...